So I would like to call the meeting of the November 15th, the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And as always, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to note that Commissioner Bradley is, has not joined and yet at this point. And if he doesn't, I'll mark an absent. Commissioner Yakapony?
Lisa, he may have just joined.
Oh, okay. Is Commissioner Bradley on the call?
Bradley here.
Welcome.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. You're just in time for the roll.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Present.
Commissioner Garvey?
Present.
Vice Chair Clements?
Present.
Chair Ruth?
Present. The next, next item is, is the public comment. And public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Section, Government Code, Section 54954. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. So Sarah and Dara, is there anyone in the waiting room for the, for the public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item, which is approval of minutes. From the October 18th meeting to?
Chair Ruth, I wanted to note two corrections to the minutes, if I could.
Please.
On page, well, I guess it's packet page five on the, under the public hearing for 447 Hillcrest. I guess it's the fourth, fifth comment down. It says Commissioner Clements asked if the designation of this property could infringe upon what adjoining properties could do. That very smart comment and question was not by me. Unfortunately, it was by Commissioner Garvey. So I wanted to correct the record on that. And I said, oh, infringe, that's a good word. I don't remember using that. That's a really good question. So it's Commissioner Garvey. And then I wanted to just note, trying to find it, at the end of the meeting, planning staff, packet page eight, under reports, correspondence, and general information on 70 Planning Commission comments or reports. Just to clarify that the second paragraph, Commissioner Clements now she went to Regional Planning Collaborative this week. The timeline, just to clarify, it's the timeline for the general or for the housing element submission had changed because of new state laws. And that's all.
Thank you. Are there other, other corrections from commissioners? If not, we can move on to the next item.
Do you, would you like a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh yeah, that's right. You're right. I forgot about that. I would entertain a motion.
I will move that the Planning Commission approved the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of October 18th, 2021, with the changes noted by Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, and I would second that motion.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, the next item is in regards to, well, let's see, item A, 555 and 661 El Camino Real. APN 050076070, request to amend the transit bill sign program has been continued to a date uncertain.
Yes, and through the chair, I would just like to ask Sarah Cudona if this item was noticed, in which case we would need to have a motion and a second just to continue it to a date uncertain. And I just, so Sarah, can you confirm whether there was a notice sent out for this?
Yes, there was a notice that was sent out.
Okay. So you wouldn't need a motion and a second to continue to a date uncertain.
I move to continue this. Can I, can I move to continue this to a date uncertain?
One second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, now we're in the public hearing section. And the first item is for 104 Sunnydale, APN 051401020. And APP 2021-00007, at a public date for the December 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, to consider an appeal of the director's decision to approve the location of a staircase associated with a second story accessory dwelling unit, ADU, above an attached garage at 104 Sunnydale Avenue. So this is a, we're setting a date for this item, and we need to formalize that new date with a motion and a roll call. So I would entertain a motion for the B, I want it shown here on the screen.
I move to set the Planning Commission public hearing date to December 6th, 2021, to consider the appeal of the director's decision to approve the location of a staircase associated with a second story accessory dwelling unit above an attached garage at 104 Sunnydale Avenue.
And through the chair, if I may, since this is a public hearing item, and though it is a very quick one, it has to do with the procedures for setting a date according to our appeal procedures and our municipal code. We do need to check to see if there's any public comment on the item. So if we could do that, maybe we can return to the motion after that.
Okay. Sarah and Dara, are there any people in, in the waiting room from the public?
Not at this time.
Well, since there's no public comment, and if there are no comments from the commissioners, then I would entertain a second to the motion that was already raised.
A second, please. I'll defer.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, the next item is a study session to review possible amendments to the municipal code, Chapter 18.16 Affordable Housing Programs. And I'm glad we got through the, all the other business so efficiently. So now we have time to, for the study section. Does staff start, have a presentation to start things off?
Yes, Adam Aronson, our Economic Development and Housing Manager, will be giving this presentation this evening. Okay, thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Chair Ruth. Yes, I'm Adam Aronson. I'm the city's Economic Development and Housing Manager. And we have for you tonight a study session on potential changes to our below-market rate ordinance. And then I also want to call out that we also have with us tonight Darren Smith, Principal at EPS. EPS is the consultant team that has been working with us on this update, and who has been doing the analysis behind this inclusionary ordinance update. And so I first wanted to just set the agenda for you all to overview what we'll be reviewing tonight. And just as a first comment, this is just a study session. So we're just looking for your feedback and any comments you have. There's no formal motion being made tonight. And the next step will be to go to a study session with the City Council before we come back to you for a public hearing to adopt a formal ordinance. So tonight we'll be starting with a waitlist and BMR unit inventory overview to kind of set the stage of where the city is at right now. We'll then have an overview of current inclusionary requirements and the recommended changes. We're then going to look at potential density bonus changes for the city. And then we're also going to look at a few additional BMR ordinance revisions that go beyond the inclusionary ordinance. And that includes a change to the threshold to construct a BMR unit rather than paying the fee, affordability periods, as well as unbundled parking. Next slide, please. Okay, so first I wanted to give you all an overview of what our affordable housing waitlist looks right, looks like right now. And so the waitlist is what we use whenever a unit becomes available in San Carlos. We pull from that waitlist. And it currently has over 4,000 households on it. It's growing every year. And presently, over 98% are at low income or below. So with very few people at the moderate income level, and a lot at the low income, very low, even lower levels. 61% of the households are one or two persons, 18% are three persons, and then 21% are four or more persons. With regards to our existing BMR inventory makeup, we currently have about 20% of our existing and the units we expect to be built over the coming few years as studio units. 38% are one bedrooms, 25% are two bedrooms, and 17% are three bedrooms. So for the moment, our, our unit sizes are aligning with what is on our waitlist. With return, with regards to the income levels we have in our existing expected BMR inventory, 37% is very low, 39% is low income, and then 24% is moderate. So comparing that to our waitlist, we do have more moderate units than we do have moderate households on our waitlist. And then with regards to renter versus ownership units, 67% are renter units and 33% are ownership units. The one caveat I want to mention with that is that the 58 rental units that are expected in the coming years are all units that are part of city-sponsored developments. So is the products at 817 Walnut and at Cherry Street. So there's no market rate rental units that we know of that would include BMR units. Next slide, please. And then looking at our arena numbers for this current cycle, and over the last few years, you'll note that the red is the numbers that we are short with regards to different income levels. So in terms of very low income units, we are 173 units behind our allocation currently. And then there are low and moderate units for both at about 90 units behind. We are beyond our unit requirements for above moderate, so just market rate units. But overall, if you include all of the affordable below-market rate units that we don't have, or 364 units behind. And just as a refresher, at the bottom here, you'll see the definitions for those different income levels. So very low is 30 to 50%, a very median income. Low is 50 to 80%, moderate is 80 to 120%, and then anything over 120% would be above moderate or a market rate unit. Next slide, please. So looking at our existing inclusionary requirements versus our recommendations. So just as a reminder, for any new development coming into town, that is seven or more units, we require that they build a certain percentage as below-market rate units. On the ownership side, we currently require that 10% of those units be moderate income units and 5% be low-income units. We will see on the following slide that that seems to be at about par with other cities in our area. Our recommendation, we plan to recommend that we go up to 20% low income. And we believe with the numbers that EPS has run, that that could help increase the number of four units being built while still maintaining feasibility. We'll go into more detail on that in the following slides. With regards to rental developments, we currently require 10% very low income and 5% low-income units. We have found is that actually is a bit more aggressive than other cities in our surrounding area. And so the recommendation is to maintain the present policy, but then also to highlight a 15% very low income alternative. And we'll get into why we're doing that in the following slides as well. Next slide, please. So this slide just shows what other cities in our area have at their inclusionary ordinances. Some of these may have been updated within the last few months or so. But in generally, you'll notice that San Carlos at the 15% level falls in line with most of the other cities on this list. And then with regards to different income levels, we're at about average as well with 5% have the low income level and 10% the moderate income level. Next slide, please. So we started to look at with the direction from the council and their strategic plan is how can we encourage more affordable development in our community? And so looking on the ownership side, we had with the help of EPS run a number of scenarios to kind of test the feasibility of different unit mixes. So you'll see on the far left column, our current ordinance of 15% inclusion at 5% low and 10% moderate. And, and as that currently stands, if you adhere to our current ordinance, you automatically get a 10% density bonus from the state density bonus. Not every developer takes advantage of that, but if they just adhere to our current ordinance, they would be eligible for it. So if you hypothetically took a 28-unit project, you could then go up to 31 units with that density bonus. And we believe would earn a profit margin of about 17.65%. It's a fairly decent profit margin, so there's some room there. What we've recommended going up to is this 20% inclusionary level. And what that does is it automatically triggers the 35% density bonus. So that 28-unit project turns into a 38-unit project. But the profit margin, because of those bonus units, actually goes up to 18.62% for the developer. And not every developer is going to take advantage of the density bonus. So that's just one thing to note. And if you look at these next few slides, we'll kind of see why we're not going higher than that. So one of the scenarios here is the 10% low and 10% mod. That actually results in a lower profit margin, even though it's less restrictive income restrictions, because you get less density bonus units from it. On the far right, you'll see that an option could be about 15% very low and 5% low, or 24% low. And that both of those actually achieve higher profit margins. So you think they're more feasible. But the reason they achieve those higher margins is because they achieve a 50% density bonus, which might not necessarily be feasible for every project. So we don't want to set that as a standard, because it might not be possible for all projects. And so instead, what we're recommending, the plan to recommend is a 20% requirement. And then if a developer wants to go beyond that and go to deeper levels of affordability or greater number of units, then they could do that, and they could achieve this state density bonus of 50%. And that is something that they are entitled to. Next slide, please. So looking at our rental city comparisons, you'll note that at the 15% level, we're at about the same as most other cities. The difference comes in in that we require 10% very low income units and 5% low income. And if you look at this slide, you'll see there, there really aren't any other cities that require 10% of very low income. Cupertino comes close. Los Altos has an option to do that, but that's an alternative to 20% at low income and only for projects of 10 or more units. Similarly, Palo Alto has a requirement of 10% very low and low income, but only for products on more than five acres. Next slide. And so as we mentioned earlier, we don't have very much in the way of rental developments coming into the city. And part of the reason we think that might be is because it's just difficult to achieve a yield on costs that makes it worth those developments coming in. And so the first thing we did is we looked at our current ordinance and what impact that's having on cost. So our current ordinance results in a 32.5% bonus, which if you take a base unit development of 59 units, so that's a one-acre project in R59, it'd result in a 78-unit project after the density bonus. And the yield on cost would be 4.9%. Generally, 5% is considered the threshold for development to move forward. So it's right on the edge of that feasibility level. And if you look at the other options here, if you go up to a 15% very low or 5% low or a 24% low, you're able to trigger that full 50% density bonus. But the yield on cost goes down even a little bit further. If we're already having trouble, we don't necessarily want to make it even harder for these rental developments to come to San Carlos. Another option could be going to the 15% very low, which also triggers that 50% bonus and does give you up to a 5% yield on cost. But as we mentioned earlier, not every project is necessarily going to be able to utilize that 50% bonus. So we don't necessarily want to make it a requirement for a project to move forward to have to achieve that 50% bonus. And so just out of curiosity, I wanted to know what impact is our inclusionary ordinance having on that yield on cost? Is that the reason that these projects are struggling to meet the feasibility threshold? So we, on the far right, you'll see that we ran a scenario where there was no inclusionary requirements. So it's just the 59 base units, there's no affordable units, there's no bonus units either. And with that, the yield on cost was at the 5.2%. So there's a slight increase, but it's not extremely significant, which we feel suggests that most of the hindrances to development coming on the rental side are actually from market factors and not from our inclusionary ordinance. But our inclusionary ordinance is at the more aggressive level in the area. And it doesn't necessarily help make these projects more feasible. So at this time, we're not recommending to increase the ordinance level on the rental side, and are recommending that we keep the current levels, but then highlight that 15% very low option as an alternative for those developers that might be interested in pursuing that 50% bonus. Next slide, please. And so we were looking at this, we didn't, we couldn't really find a way to amend our rental inclusionary ordinance to help make rental developments more feasible. And so an idea that the council's housing subcommittee wanted us to look into was a potential revision to our city density bonus. So similar to the state density bonus, we have a city density bonus. But currently, our city density bonus is quite a bit simpler. It's just, oh, for every low-income unit or lower, you get one bonus unit. Typically, that's a much less favorable bonus compared to the state density bonus. So we very rarely see developers take advantage of it. And one of the ways we've kind of come up with addressing this is perhaps amending our city, our city density bonus for rental projects specifically, not for ownership projects, but just for rental projects, and allowing a bonus of four units for every very low-income unit and two units for every low-income unit. And one thing to note is that with the state density bonus, you cannot combine bonuses from different income levels. So with our 10% very low requirement, our 5% low requirement, you can only get the bonus from that 10% very low. You don't get a full bonus from the 15% of the units. What we would consider doing with our city density bonus is allowing them to, allowing developers to combine the different income levels and get the bonus from both income levels. So if you look at the table here, you'll see the city density bonus on the left as proposed, and the state density bonus on the right for a hypothetical hundred-unit project. With our current requirements and the requirements we're likely sticking with, they would have to build 10 very low-income units and five low-income units. So for the state density bonus, that would result in 33 bonus units for a total of 133 units. For the city, that would result in 50 bonus units. So you get 40 bonus units for 10 very low-income units and 10 bonus units for the five low-income units, so for 150 units total. We discovered that this does result in a slight feasibility increase varying by the project size. Then the other thing to note is that, since this would be an alternative to the state bonus, if developers were to use the city density bonus, it wouldn't trigger the same concessions that the state density bonus does. So as you may recall, the state bonus, depending on how many units you build and what depth of affordability you can trigger concessions from height limits and setback requirements, our city density bonus doesn't do that. So there is a cap, a project couldn't just go out and propose 100 low-income units to then get 500 units overall. Next slide, please. And then we also want to touch on a few additional amendments we're considering to our BMR ordinance that are separate from the inclusionary ordinance. The first is that threshold that requires a BMR unit would be built for ownership units would be lowered from seven to five units. So since we'd be going from 15% to 20%, 20% of five is then one unit. So currently, a project of five or six units doesn't have to build a unit. They could pay instead. But with this revision, projects of five or six units on the ownership side would have to build a unit. For rental developments, the threshold still remains seven units to acquire building a unit. We are also looking at changing the affordability periods of these developments to run in perpetuity. So our current code states that for ownership units, affordability period has to be at least 45 years. And then for rental units, has to be at least 55 years. Most other cities do something similar to that, but some have gone farther to 99 years or in perpetuity. And we've heard from our housing subcommittee that they're interested in going to extending these affordability periods in perpetuity. And the other thing we wanted to look at that you may remember, coming to the Planning Commission in the past, is adding restrictions on unbundled parking. So presently, our ordinance is a bit big on how unbundled parking impacts affordable units. And we want to make it clear that unbundled parking cannot make a parking unaffordable to our affordable units. And so on the rental unit side, we want to define rent to include all of these paid for parking. And we require that BMR units be offered in any such as parking, parking equivalent to those of market rate units. And then the ownership side, we require that BMR units include a parking space at a ratio equivalent to that of market rate units. And in developments that include unbundled parking spaces, the parking spaces must be included in the affordable sale price for the BMR unit at a ratio equivalent to what the distribution of parking spaces among all units would have been where the space is not unbundled. So there is a scenario where if there aren't enough parking spaces for every unit in development, the BMR unit might not get a parking space, but they wouldn't not get a space if an equivalent market rate unit was having the opportunity to get a space. And next slide, I believe, is our final. And next slide, I believe, is our final slide. You know, this was a lot of information, but Darren and I are both here and happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you for a clear, concise presentation. Are there clarifying questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Garvey?
Oh, thank you, Adam. That was an excellent presentation, and it was also a really well-written packet agenda item. I had to go through it several times to try to understand everything. There was, there was a lot there to unpack. I have one question. Given the reasonable profit margins, what are some of the reasons that all developers don't take advantage of the density bonus? You said some of them do, but many of them do not. Can you help me understand why not? Is it because the project takes more time, because you're building more units? Or what are some of the reasons that developers give you why they don't want to take advantage of that bonus?
So it can vary from project to project. Sometimes with larger projects, if you reach a certain threshold, costs can actually go up depending on the construction materials you have to use. In other cases, larger projects of higher densities might just not be that developer's specialty. So you have some developers that are more interested in developing, see townhome projects that are larger, three or four bedrooms, and they don't want to build more two or three bedroom units. They prefer to just stay with what they're used to and don't want to take advantage of that bonus.
Thank you. That's helpful. I didn't know that.
Commissioner Clennett?
So we're in a procedural question. Hi, Adam. So nice to see you. I have a procedural question. So we're in a study session, and so we're not going to be making any motions. And so I have lots of questions. So I guess my question is, number one, are we going to, you know, have opinions offered after this, but no motions? Or is this just all about clarifications tonight?
Yes, so, please go ahead, Steph.
So we're looking for any and all comments you might have. So the goal here is to get your feedback and your opinions on what you feel about these proposed recommendations that we can then bring those to the city council and so they can know how the planning commission feels about this.
Okay.
And through the chair, in response to the planning commissioner or vice chair commissioner's question.
Thank you.
I did set the slides in order, you know, to ask questions, kind of like we normally do. And there is a slide following this one. For an opportunity, if there's anyone from the public watching and they want to make comments, we do have a public comment slide for this item. And then we also have another slide for just discussion and comments. So it's everything. And they can go in whatever, you know, order the commission would like it to. But we just tee it up this way, just based upon our past practices.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Okay, I'll start with a couple of easy questions, Adam. For Rena, I know the typical definition of very low income is, as you had cited, between extremely low and low. For Rena, I don't think they combine extremely low income and very low, and that's why the number's larger. And so doesn't that VLI Rena goal include both ELI and VLI?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, all right. So really, that would take it, those AMIs, area median incomes, all the way down to zero, if you will, then, because that's where ELI would go down to. Okay. All right, just wanted to clarify that that's the same everywhere. Did EPS profile the housing costs at ten percent less than the upper limit for each one of the ranges? So I saw a reference to low at seventy percent of AMI. So are they using those definitions for the affordable housing cost? So mod is at one ten, very low is at forty, then? Do you know if that's what they use?
That's right. Darren, do you mind weighing in?
The very low is set at fifty. That's the calculus that we did, the full fifty percent of median income on very low. For rentals, the low income is calculated at sixty percent of median. And for, for sale, it's calculated at seventy percent of median income, consistent with state law regarding the density bonus.
So the affordable housing cost definition in the Health and Safety Code is that you usually profile it at ten percent less. And I'm used to dealing with that for moderate income. And hi, Darren. How are you? Nice to hear from you. I'm used to dealing with that a lot for low income and moderate, especially for homebuyer programs, but and, and we're used to rental projects dealing with sixty percent of area median because of tax credit deals. So, so I hear you saying that for rental, you just stuck with the normal upper tier, but for the homebuyer, you did the ten percent reduction.
Right, we set that at seventy percent of median income, again, consistent with what the state's density bonus program allows for low income.
Seventy and one ten, okay. Got it, okay. So a couple other clarifications. It looks like, so I work in San Jose. Our inclusionary ordinance makes a distinction as to where you produce the units and where therefore what the, or if you pay the fees instead, that the, that the percentage produced varies whether you're going to try to produce it, integrate it into the project, or if you want to produce it, but produce it next door, for instance. Under certain circumstances, you would be allowed to if it's required by a financial structure and to take advantage of tax credits. So how does San Carlos think about that? It seems like the ordinance is kind of devoid of that differentiation of onsite versus offsite. Is that right?
Yeah, so we don't, our ordinance doesn't speak to say integrated versus right next door. We do have some language related to an alternative to build the units offsite at the council's discretion if they're, if they're open to.
Okay. And I could give comments later, but you know, there's a lot of back and forth as soon as you start talking about producing, but producing offsite. There's a lot of discussion about fair housing concerns, right? So good to take advantage of tax credits and other affordable financing sources, as we know. But a lot of complaints that that is not at all the same thing, you know, from a fair housing perspective, so. Might be better.
I don't believe the council's been open to it. We haven't had any of those projects happen in San Carlos.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the ultimate, you know, ultimate integration at the building level is the gold standard, right? That everyone would love to have for the inclusionary program, so. And every floor by floor, right? So, all right. When developers do elect the density bonus, the state density bonus in San Carlos, but what we find in the South Bay is that they are usually not opting for more units. They often opt for, first of all, a lot of the developers are actually affordable developers, and they often seem to opt for parking reductions under the state density bonus rather than additional units. And so those that do opt for the density bonus, the state one, in San Carlos, do they opt for more units typically, or what do you see?
Yeah, so I think we're in San Carlos a little behind in terms of developers taking advantage of the state density bonus. It's becoming more common, I think, in just the past few years, particularly now with the fifty percent increase. But yes, that is correct. We have seen a few projects where they don't take advantage of the full bonus they could be entitled to in terms of units, but they do take advantage of the concessions for parking and things like that.
Yes, and I thought your comments to Commissioner Garvey were spot on in my experience as to not necessarily wanting to go to a different building type or project typology. Not necessarily in developer's sweet spot or feasibility range, so that, that to me is spot on. Okay, just a couple more questions clarifying. When you, under your ordinance, when developers, do developers build rental buildings but build them to condo standards here? And how does your ordinance consider that?
Like with regards to potential condo conversions?
Yeah, I, you know, we see that as the norm in the South Bay that in order to give the building more flexibility on kind of different financial iterations over time, they will build to condo standards upfront so that later on, if somebody wants to consider that, you know, an investor wants to consider that as having a flexible exit strategy, if you will, that that's possible. So what standards do developers build to here? Do you see that on the peninsula here too, or no?
I believe that is usually the case. I don't want to say with a hundred percent certainty, but I will say, for example, we did have at least one rental development in the last couple of years that tried to convert to a condominium, to a condominium. And that, right? And then that was an appeal to the council denied based on the rental developments in our city.
Right, right. Right, okay. And then two other thoughts just about how tax credits interact with the proposed terms of the ordinance. So one is about restrictions in perpetuity, which I love, except where tax credits are involved. And what I've found with my research is that tax credit investors don't like restrictions in perpetuity. And that as long as that's not the execution, it seems to be fine or better because it interferes with the the investors' councils notions of what constitutes debt. And so for complicated reasons. So have you run into this conversation and has that kind of come up? Or maybe Darren could comment on that as well.
Yeah, I'll say for me, it hasn't come up yet. It does sound like it's a need to keep in consideration. I don't know if Darren has anything to add.
I do. My experience is that tax credit projects typically, for financing reasons, as you're suggesting, Commissioner, tend to be at fifty five years. And, but, but what we're talking about here as inclusionary units, for the most part, we are not talking about units that would be receiving tax credits because they're a small proportion of the overall project and they're integrated with the rest of the market rate unit. And while there are some examples around the country of mixed income projects for which tax credits have been provided, that is not the norm. And so it would not be expected that these units would be receiving tax credits and thus subject to that fifty five year expectation.
I'm just thinking, I mean, all affordable properties would still be subject to inclusionary requirements. So it might be something that the ordinance ends up getting worded to the extent that the lenders allow that in perpetuity. Demarcation and ninety nine years. There are ground leases commonly that are ninety nine years in affordable housing land. And so, which is kind of de facto in perpetuity, if, you know, in many people's estimation, but and not just fifty five, right? But so you may be able to state it in a way that just allows for an exception basis under certain kind of evidence provided or something.
For a hundred percent affordable projects?
Or, or for mixed income. It's possible that one deal that comes forward on one development permit could have two financial structures if it was really large, right? So it's possible that one side would be a tax credit deal and one side wouldn't. And so it's, it just depends how you think about it and how you process it internally, right? Whether you process that as two applications or one, you know, probably from my perspective, you process it with a land use application. So you process it as one. So you just want to be careful how you'd word it. That'd be my suggestion. And then one more comment on, along those lines, which is my understanding is that the state treasurer's office still has not changed anything about the definition of rent and unbundling parking from rent. And so I, if you could clarify again, that the definition of rent would be all fees paid for rent and parking? Is that what the proposal was? Maybe you could go back to that slide for a sec? But that unbundled parking is not possible, excuse me, still on tax credit funded units, to my understanding. So again, that would be the, like the restrictions in perpetuity, there might have to be some kind of carve out until or unless TCAT gets a little bit more progressive or something. I don't know. It's a not, it's a thorny issue. So I don't know if you or if Darren has, has more thought about that.
I don't. That was one of the trickier amendments in terms of how we're going to word it to make sure that it has teeth. So it's going to need some work from us and our little council to get it where we need it to be.
I totally agree. Because I, this is a thorny issue. I really agree, and we want to make sure the incentives are all right to not overpark. And that you have to base it on the lowest package, if you will, of, 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 what's the right word? Accoutrement of, of amenities that a unit has, right? And so I understand. Okay, those, those were my clarifying questions. Thank you so much. Thanks for your patience, Chair. And Adam and Darren, thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. Are, do other commissioners have clarifying questions before we open for public comment? Commissioner Garvey? You're on mute.
Thank you, Chair Roof. One additional question about the idea of in lieu fees versus building onsite. I'm curious as to what the city's experience has been in the past couple of years since they changed from allowing developers to pay in lieu fees to requiring that developers build the below market housing onsite. Back when we had the in lieu fees, if I read the packet correctly, those fees could be used as matching funds for nonprofits to, to leverage projects in, in locations that were not the project site. And then when we, but when we required them to build the units onsite, that allowed for the distribution all around the city of those below market rate housing. How has that gone in the last two years? Do, do you, do you feel that that change in policy has had the benefit, benefited effect that you had thought it would have? I'm, I'm just curious. I read in the packet that we may be missing out on leveraging some projects because we are not giving the developers a choice again to pay the in lieu fee. And I'm, I'm just curious, how has this gone since we've changed it? Or maybe we, maybe it hasn't been changed for long enough to really fully realize what effect it has had?
Yeah, so I believe since we made that change, I think only one rental project has come into San Carlos. And so that was a small project of, I believe, only nine units. And so only one BMR unit was created with that project. There is talk of other larger projects coming into town that, from my understanding, are okay with our existing ordinance and building the units and are not trying to pay. Even they wouldn't be allowed to, but they're not asking to.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I have a question, a clarification, which is the language that you use refers to the number of the bonuses units. But we wouldn't want to arrive at a situation where a building full of two bedroom market rate units and then have the bonus unit via studio. So how do you account for, manage that?
So we have language in our ordinance that says that the BMR units have to be similar in terms of unit size, in terms of the number of bedrooms as the market rate units. So distribution of the units also has So distribution of the units also has to be fairly distributed throughout the project. They can't all be on the first floor. They have to be on different levels if it's a multi-story building. And say if there's a mix of twenty-five percent one bedrooms or twenty-five, two, three, four bedrooms, the BMR units have to be at that same breakdown. They can't just do all one bedroom units as the BMR units.
So does the code require parity? Is that, is that principle established?
Yes, that's correct. There's, there's some language in that there can be slight differences in square feet. And part of that is due to state law. But in terms of the bedroom, number of bedrooms in each unit, there has to be parity between them.
Good. I see Commissioner Yakapony has a question.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for asking that question. That was one of two. My second one was just a follow up for Adam. And that, I didn't expect it when you said you ran the scenario, if I heard it right, with the four to one and two to one proposed city density bonus, which, by the way, I liked. But then I thought you said it didn't result in a much improved return on cost. So number one question, did I hear that right? And, and two, if that's the case, did you have anything more bold in mind? Because if forward to going is from like four eight to five point one or two percent, then we're not moving the needle on rentals. So I'm just concerned about that. So did I hear it right? And what was the result with that city bonus as you proposed?
It does, it does have a slight increase to the OVA cost. It's not, you know, a full percent or a full or anything like that. But it does make the projects more feasible. Darren, I'm going to provide more on the background calculations.
Yes, it does improve the feasibility of the project measurably and enough that we see it as being preferable in certain ways to the state's density bonus. The example that was given was that you would get a fifty percent bonus through the city's local density bonus ordinance compared to only a thirty-three percent bonus for the same number and types of units under the state's density bonus. So we do see those additional, in this case seventeen market rate units, as making an appreciable improvement to the feasibility of the project because those are all at market rates. And those drive the economics upward. One thing that is, you know, i- if you were to go in this direction by offering a, an enhanced local density bonus o- option. As Adam notes at the very bottom of this slide, it would not necessarily trigger the same concessions that are allowed by the state's density bonus. Those are typically designed and used concessions. So you would, each developer would need to choose for themselves which of the two different programs worked best for them. And in some cases, I would imagine it would still be the state's density bonus because of those concessions. Whereas in other cases, just based on the type of project they were building, the size and configuration of their site and so on, the local density bonus may be preferable for them. So that's why we've recommended it as an option that a developer could exercise at their discretion to optimize the feasibility of their project.
Okay, thank you. I'm, so can maybe then two follow ups, please. Relative to the four point nine or the five point two, what would your, what's your judgment about the, what the fifty added units versus the thirty-three added units does to that return or cost cover or whatever your metric was? Sorry, I don't.
So it's actually the very last sentence of our, of our memo. And it indicates that with this local density bonus as suggested, it would increase the project's yield from four point nine to five point zero. So it has that level of, of improvement. It wouldn't necessarily make it as feasible as a project with no inclusionary units whatsoever.
Maybe I, my reflection then would be I appreciate the consideration around the four to one and the two to one, but it doesn't actually seem like if we recommend this to city council, it moves the needle. And I, I, I'm not sure what other tactics are out there to be used in the four rental units. But if, the, the point being, if the reason that we're not getting rental projects is because four point nine is not as attractive, moving to five doesn't strike me as any more attractive. Just by math. So that's just an observation. Then maybe the second point would be, on your last sentence on this slide, did you consider a recommendation that not only would a developer get the city density bonus, but they could also get the height waiver, for example, as part of the automatic package?
We have not considered that yet. The one concern is to what extent does that height limit go? And if there isn't one, is there a concern over a project continuing to grow much farther past than than what the city is willing to take on? So yeah, we have not considered that yet.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, those responses. Appreciate it.
I have a comment and a question, I guess. One thing, and this isn't criticism. In fact, I want to compliment Darren and Adam both on presentation and the report. Very good job here and helpful for us. But one thing it doesn't deal with and we need is housing for older people. And all the cities around us have more projects like that than we do, I'm, I'm wondering. And they're maybe the same size Belmont, certainly. We've got the Elms and I forget the name of the one that's kind of tucked in Devonshire Canyon off of Little Street Beverly. But Belmont is certainly Redwood City, Palo Alto and San Mateo all have many projects necessarily high rise or mid, even mid, mid-rise. They can be cottages or all multiple family housing to fill this need because a lot of people have lived here for decades and decades. When they stop working, they can't afford to live here any longer, just like the younger people that were raised here and, and come back after college because they can't afford housing. So are we getting any requests from builders? Or do we have enough land anywhere to do, do something like this? Don't have much land left, but we can convert own urban areas. Sorry for the rambling. I didn't make my comments.
Would staff like to respond to that?
I'm not aware of any recent older adult housing coming or assisted living housing coming at the affordable levels coming to the city. I'm not sure if Lisa knows of anything there. I will say we haven't been given direction by the council yet to pursue that particular type of affordable housing typology yet. But we can certainly bring that as a comment to them, as something that's of interest to the planning commission.
I'd like to comment further. I'll see the minutes. Thank you.
Commissioner Clements, another clarifying type question.
Yes, thanks. Just building on what Commissioner Yakapony had brought up, a couple of questions. Could you go one slide ahead for me? I just wanted to, oh, sorry, maybe the next slide ahead. There was the other table. Sorry. Thank you. That last column with the five point two return, no units built. Is that assuming in lieu fees though?
No, I don't believe so. Is that correct, Darren?
That is correct.
Okay.
This was, I'm sorry to interrupt. This was an exercise to see to the extent to which the city's inclusionary program was contributing to the feasibility challenges.
I see. I want to commend you on drawing that conclusion. It is very easy for the city to have a conversation that somehow the marginal fee is ruining feasibility. And even though costs are high, somehow it's that last dollar that is just ruining everything and holding all of the development back. And I appreciate you running the fees, you know, the sensitivity analysis to show that really that delta is not very large. And while to Commissioner Yakapony's question as to like, does four point nine versus five really make a difference? I think it does when you're talking about large budgets and hurdle rates. I mean, there you know, there are rates of return where folks are like, this is a go or no go kind of level of return. And I trust Darren if he's saying it's five point oh. But it can make a difference, especially in large budget. So thanks for doing that sensitivity analysis. And I wanted to just ask, build on that last question, which is, had you thought about, Aaron, you'd said we didn't want to necessarily raise heights and do a whole lot more units at the same time. I'm wondering what you thought about doing some of the other state concessions like parking reductions as an alternative on top of the additional units. And I don't know all that much about our parking ratios. I haven't memorized that part of our code yet. But just another question as to would that scenario be helpful to run or not?
Yeah, so with regards to concessions, essentially what we've done is we've just left the bonus as it is, which is just that one for one exchange. And then there's really no explicit language to allowing concessions. So we haven't considered those different factors. We just kind of left it as it is now. But they could be added in and to a certain extent, it could be left up to the interpretation of the city. This is not reconciled anywhere.
And then one more question, and then I will turn it back to the chair. Have you had developers asking for additional options under the ordinance?
I believe we've had one developer that was interested in building offsite. But we expressed that that wasn't the desire of the council at that time and don't believe those conversations went further.
Thanks.
Well, perhaps we could move to the, I was going to suggest we move to the public comment.
I'll, I'll, I'll hold my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I just, I like to allow us to receive the public input before we kind of get into deliberation mode. That way we can take into account that information. So if you'd like to make a public comment on agenda item seven A, study session on municipal code, chapter eighteen dot sixteen, affordable housing programs. Now is the time to speak. May you join the Zoom meeting? Or if on the phone, you can press star nine and then star six to unmute. So Sarah and Vera, are there anybody in the, in the waiting room to, for public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion? No, we probably don't need a motion because this is just a study session, right?
To close public comments, you mean?
Yeah, to close, should we, well, maybe we should just close the public comment to be to be sure. So I would entertain a motion to close the public comment.
I would.
The public comments.
I second that motion. Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley, I apologize for my voice. Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. Well, now's the, now's the more deliberative phase of our discussion and, and again, I think generating ideas, like we already had some good ones that can be brought forward for consideration can be very useful. So would anybody like to get the ball rolling on additional discussion? I think I saw Commissioner Clements handle it first and then Garvey.
Always happy to think through things with my fellow commissioners. I wanted first to commend the city for looking at the ordinance. This is a really opportune time to look at the economics of development. We know that I was looking at for sale prices and the alarming escalation in prices over the last year that has occurred in our market. And so I'm really glad that we're looking, especially at the ownership, to confirm that not only are the inclusionary obligations reasonable, they actually could be higher. Because projects, and you can see it in our market, that projects that have been stalled for years and years are now going forward. So it's all around us that things are moving forward, which is wonderful. But it's because the median sales price this month is two point three million in San Carlos, which is absurd. So that's the flip side. And I'm sorry to see that forty-seven hundred, over four thousand people are on the waitlist. Ninety-eight percent of them are low income because it is impossible to buy here if you are low income. So I want to encourage, I want to support us to continue to, to make ownership, you know, really a requirement to the extent that we can. I'm so thrilled to see us aiming for a low income bar, not a moderate income ownership bar. Because that's more of a market rate concept, especially in our very high income county here in San Mateo County. So aiming for low income buyers is much better, much superior to me. So thank you for, I, I support that motion. I do want to say that it is very clever to think about a city density bonus. And we are not the first city to think about this. I just heard a presentation from the city of San Diego. And they have had great success over the last few years, and maybe Darren knows all about this, having put in place their own density bonus and gotten in San Diego a lot of moderate income units built with no subsidies. Hundreds and hundreds over the last few years. So, you know, the details matter, very much so. But I do think that that in healthy real estate markets, it really can work. And I am happy that we are thinking about, even though development costs are just so difficult right now, how can we make rentals still work? And I just think that's very, a very clever idea to say, how can we enhance the tool that we've got? That can really help this pencil out better. So, and help us meet our forthcoming reading goals and our existing ones that are so hard to meet. So I really support us moving forward with a city density bonus program. I think it's very, very wise and very thoughtful. And then, you know, my last thought for the moment, because this is a very detailed part of our industry and very, I used to manage an inclusionary program. Excuse me, it takes a lot to get the balance of incentives right. So that AC production, you don't inhibit production, and you see what you want to see from the program, right? So it's good to look at it frequently. And then think about fee collection versus unit production. And I want to say that, while I think it is important to build in flexibility into the ordinance, to build in flexibility into the ordinance, so that developers have some choice. Because legally, that's important. And, you know, it's nice to be friendly to business who, folks who do want to help the community develop. It is the best when the units get built at the same time in the buildings. And so to the extent that we can make that to incent that behavior, I'm really in favor of that. Collecting fee revenue was good, but we have other fee sources here too, right? Inclusionary is a special program that gets units built with housing already going up. There's no other way to do fine grained at the building level, inclusion of affordability as other build, as other units go up. There's no other tool like that. It's very special. And I use gold standard. I, I really believe in inclusionary as a wonderful program, if it's working right. So I, I encourage us to continue to offer some flexibility, but really incent those units to be built rather than fees to be generated, because it is not the same thing. And as someone who used to collect a lot of fees and turn them back around and then, and, you know, subsidize deeply affordable housing with them, it's, that's all good. It just takes years and years, and you don't get the units in the same neighborhoods necessarily, right? It's not at all the same thing. So anyway, I, I think if this tool is not broken, let's not fix it. So those are my immediate thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Garvey?
I wanted to build on the, on the discussion about city density bonuses and, and Adam, a question. Does Redwood City have a city density bonus? Something seems to be drawing lots of developers to the table to build large apartment buildings all around the city. Are they being built? And there's affordable units in them. Is, do they have a very different set of incentives for developers that we do not have? Do they have a city density bonus that is offering different things? Do you have any, I, you, you happen to know how, how that's, why that's happening over there?
I'm not certain on the density bonus specifics, but I do know, you know, for Redwood City, they embarked on a downtown specific plan not too long ago, that I think was a big catalyst for them with the development that you see there now. And that, that's also something San Carlos is looking at doing next year as a downtown plan, as I'm sure you may have heard of already. I'd say the other factors involved are that there's larger parcels available in Redwood City compared to San Carlos. And I think historically, maybe not so much now, lower land values. So the, it was perhaps a little bit cheaper to buy in Redwood City than San Carlos. So that may not be true today.
Yeah, that, that's helpful information. And I do know from past staff presentations that the parcels of land in San Carlos that are available are small. And, and while I appreciate in the packet that charging in lieu fees for five to seven unit buildings, I, I don't know how much cash that's actually going to generate. And is that actually going to move the needle? I'm, 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 but I'm not sure how to move the needle. I'm, I'm just not sure how much cash that would generate. But I did like the idea that if you, that you would have to put in one unit if you, if you just did, you know, five to, five to six units, which now you don't have to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment that. For the lieu fees on those smaller developments, they're, they are smaller. They're not, it takes a long time for those to build up to a, a project that can be built. We certainly gather more fees with regards to affordable housing from elsewhere, from like our commercial linkage fee and those sorts of sources. But the, the reason the thresholds are where they're at is because once you get below those sizes, it becomes fairly difficult for those projects to build an affordable unit and then still meet their cost thresholds. Which is why it's at seven for, for both rental and ownership. But we do think we could go lower on the ownership side to five units. So it's a step towards just getting more units built and fewer fees on that side.
Thank you.
Well, I'll weigh in on, I like the, the city bonus concept. I think it makes it more efficient to, to do that. That's a, writes more flex to the good thing. I wonder if there's ways we can have the city bonus coupled to some flexibility in the, in the, in the height and height and floor area provisions, so that in appropriate parts of the city, we could have larger units and kind of have a catalyst to have the, have the BMR bonus be a positive effect in terms of getting additional housing built in the city. And right now it seems to be that what's being proposed is sort of a break even or maybe some benefit in terms of flexibility. But, but if there's anything more we can do to make it clear that the city would be willing to offer some additional height, if we can get additional units that way that are below market rate, that would be an avenue worth, worth exploring from my perspective.
I would support that as well. And, and I hear your point, Adam, that that possibly could be worked into the downtown plan when they carve out certain areas near transit or what, or whatever, where that type of a bonus might be most beneficial, that, that it might not be citywide. It might be within a certain distance of a, of a transit hub as an idea.
Yes. Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair. Maybe just, I know there were a number of recommendations in the pack and I just thought I'd speak to a few that we haven't touched on. This notion of lowering for ownership from seven to five and then having the 20% bonus be a fact there. That seems wise. I like the idea, I think, as Commissioner Vice Chair Clements spoke about incentivizing below market rate ownership. So I think that's great. You know, the difference between affordability to perpetuity and affordability to 99 years. You know, 99 years, it won't matter to me, but I think for, it might for developers. And so I, if there's, if there's a difference in the market or in practice of going to a 99 year rather than perpetuity, it would be worth conversation prior to going to city council. I, I'm very much in favor of not discriminating against below market rate units in parking with unbundled parking. So I just want to thank the team for calling that out as a specific. I appreciate the need to get the language right. And I'm sure that we have good skilled legal team at the council to be able to help with that. But I think that's, that's very good. And then, you know, I just revert back to, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not in the business of, of real estate, and I could appreciate, as was raised, that the difference between 4.9% cover on cost and five might be the trigger for more. And if there's anything more bold that you have in mind that would increase the return or the attractiveness, I'd suggest you put it on the table before you go to council. Push the bounds and let them say no rather than, than not, because it feels like we have a, a real problem with the rental units as well. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Clements?
I had a quick question probably for Lisa, which is, I think the, talking about Redwood City, the, the reason that they saw so much development is because their plan was a precise plan. And I think they were very specific as to densities. And the individual projects could, their entitlements could tear off of the plan pretty easily. Is that what's anticipated for our downtown plan? And I just wanted to be clear as to our downtown plan is not, it's an area plan, but not a specific plan. Is that right?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair Clements. What I can tell you right now is that we are looking to do actually a specific plan for the downtown area. So it would be, you know, cover all of the necessary requirements of a specific plan, required under state law and infrastructure planning, as well as methods for financing implementation and including land use and zoning modifications to implement those land use policies. So be an all in one plan. And we, you know, definitely have the opportunity to look at what we can do to make it clear and straightforward, you know, even holding in objective standards, which, you know, we have to do these days. The clear signal to developers, you know, what are the city's rules for developing and let them come in and do what they need to do. So that's the direction we are taking.
That's great. That's wonderful news. I do think the more that we can have some alternatives within our own inclusionary program, the, you know, the more interest that we will get. And if we are confined by small sites, which I think we are, that flexibility may help. But again, I, I don't want to err on the side of fees because I do know, I mean, I've, I've talked to many developers and it is clear that paying a fee, writing a check day one is much less risky and much more knowable. Even if it's slightly higher than you might pay really dollar wise, by then cutting rents, it is much lower risk than actually producing units and having to manage them and deal with people. And so if you have fees, you're going to get, you know, if you have a lot of really reasonable fee, you're going to get fees. If you have a higher fee, you know, the art is how high can you put it so that it's really an even push with creating units and, and having them amortize their loss on that full rent over time with that additional risk. So anyway. But alternative is good. So I agree with Commissioner Yakapony. If there are any other ideas to explore, I think it's a great time to do it.
Additional comments? Well, are we ready to wrap up? Do we want to, I see Commissioner Garvey has something?
Yeah. I just wanted, thank you Chair Ruth. I just wanted to associate myself with the comment that Commissioner Yakapony made to ensure that BMR units do not lose access to parking as a result of the unbundled parking strategies. He has raised that on previous projects. It's, it was, it was a great point then. It was, it's a great point now. And I wanted to also support that idea. Thank you.
I'm in support of this recommendation to this report. And I'm, I'm glad I noticed that we're a little more aggressive than some cities' requirements. And that's probably, we act like that, I think, is why we're called the city of good living.
Thank you. It's a nice.
Thank you.
A good, good perspective you should always keep in mind. Well, I think we've got some good ideas on the table. And I trust that staff is capturing that. And we'll push them forward for consideration. So if there are no further comments, maybe we should close, close our study section. Last call for comments. I guess I would entertain a motion to close our, our study session.
Oh, through the chair because this is a study session. There's no.
You don't need to.
Close it. Yeah.
Okay, good. So we, so let's move on to the, to the next item in our meeting, which is reports, correspondence and general information. A, report on city council actions.
Yes, I just wanted to let the commission know that at the last city council meeting on November 8th, an ordinance was introduced and passed to expand the noticing requirements for R D R C. The commission may remember this is a recommendation that they gave. And this expand the noticing requirements from 150 to 300 feet. And the second reading of the ordinance, because it's an ordinance amendment, it requires a second reading, would be taken up by the council at their next meeting on November 22nd. And that's all I have for item A this evening.
B, planning commission comments or reports. Commissioners?
No, but thank you.
Hearing none, we can move to C, correspondence.
None this evening, Chair Ruth.
And D, planning staff comments, reports and updates for current projects.
Thank you, Chair Ruth. Just a couple of announcements for some upcoming meetings. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for December the 6th. And we have items on the agenda. We have two appeals. One is at 104 Sunnydale, which the commission just set the date for this earlier on tonight's agenda. And the other one is an appeal for a single county home at 2125 Carmelia. And then the last item for December 6th is 1129 Old County Road. This is an amendment to an existing planned development plan to consider new uses of the site. The December 20th planning commission calendar is clear at this time. So we'll see if any items are ready to advance forward, but if not, we can cancel it. The first meeting of the new year is January 3rd. We're going to cancel that. And then on, actually, I will be sending out an email to the commission, pulling your availability for January 12th. Excuse me. For January 12th, we're lucky to have a E I R scoping for the housing. And that's all for this evening. Thank you.
Lisa, do you envision that, that, that scoping meeting on the 12th would be like an evening meeting, like a six or seven PM meeting? Do you have any idea about the time yet? And I don't need you to answer with lots of sentences.
It would be in the evening.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll, we'll respond to your email to confirm availability, that people check their calendars. Are there any other reports, updates from you?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody, for a good meeting. And we can adjourn.
Thank you, David.
Hope you're feeling better, Lisa.
Feel better, Lisa. And if Aaron's still here, thanks, Aaron.
Yes.